Great study in Zane and Dan, I forgot your last name.
Casbaum.
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 Casbaum, yes.
Who helped put all this data together is here. So, Zane, I'm going to let you lead off.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, my name is Zane Lewis. You guys have seen me here before. Thank you for having us again this evening. McClellan has been working with your staff for months now, and we've talked about it a few times before, on a Act 605 compliant rate study for the water and sewer utilities. McClellan partnered with Dan, who works with the company Utility Financial Solutions, excuse me, and so we're very excited to have him here today. He speaks this language much better than I do, and so when, you know, if we have questions, he'll likely be able to answer them more clearly than I would. But in the packet I just handed out, there is an updated PowerPoint slide, looks like this, and this is what we're going to start with, just to kind of get everything introduced, and then I'll bring Dan up here in just a moment. But just flipping to the first page, the basic overview of the requirements of the Arkansas Act 605 that we have been tasked with helping to walk you guys through includes more than just the rate study itself. And so part of it, as many of you have already participated in, is training that the managers or leaders of utilities are required to go through by the state to make sure that you understand some of the issues around ratemaking. And of course, this is administered through the Arkansas Department of Natural Resources, a division of the Department of Agriculture at the state. And another thing that they do is administer loans for large projects, which is another thing that we're working with them on with the wastewater improvement project. We've applied for and received approval for funding from their agency. So, one of the most important things about running through the Act 605 compliance is to provide the state with the documentation required to not be labeled under fiscal distress, which is my second item there. And so what legislators are trying to do is make sure that the utility is healthy, that it can afford to cover its costs, and to make improvements or expansions as needed, primarily focusing on the requirement to comply with federal and state laws for the health and safety of our users, as well as the new fiscal requirements for the health of the utility. Another component of the Act 605 is the workforce recruitment and retention. And so while this is not the primary focus, it's a very important aspect of maintaining the health, safety, and functionality of our water and sewer utilities. And so within that, I know that the Public Works Director, Simon, and staff have looked at, you know, what are the pay rates required to retain qualified staff? What are the incentives to get them excited to earn their licensure? So depending on whether a staff member is working on the water or sewer side, there are separate licensures required from a Class 1 up to a Class 4, which is the licensure required to be operating the wastewater plant. And so there's obviously a lot of other utilities around the area, and to be able to maintain that integrated knowledge and wisdom of the utility, we don't want you guys having to replace staff regularly, who are constantly having to be retrained. The value of being able to maintain staff over the years is much higher for the utility to keep them onboard. So you guys do not have a large enough system that is outside of your municipal boundaries to be required to have the advisory committee component of the Act 605, so that's one nice thing that we're not worried about here. And then I mentioned training. So there's quite a lot that goes into just the overall act, but then as we dig into the cost of service rate study and we move to the next sheet, one of the major components of that is your existing asset inventory and your capital improvement plan. So the next two things in your packet are 11 by 17 pages in color, and it's two tables. One of them is more blue and one of them is more green. And so between those two tables, we have listed every major asset owned by the utility, owned and operated by the utilities that goes into our understanding of how to maintain your ability to fix your leaks and continue to serve your customers. So looking at the water, the blue one first, you note that we have two items towards the top highlighted in yellow, and those would be your water booster pump stations, which are your connections to your water provider, Carroll Boone Water. And so both of these facilities, having been installed many years ago, those two facilities would be at the top of our recommended priority to be looked at, evaluated, and any repairs that are deemed necessary performed as a part of this initial five-year capital improvement plan. If we switch to the green table, in addition to those two water pump stations, we've highlighted the wastewater treatment plan improvements project that McClellan is also working with you on as the primary need for this first five-year capital improvement plan. We would love to do more than that, but that is very expensive, and this one project is already so expensive that we do not feel comfortable asking to do more right now. And partially, that was determined through an iterative process where we worked with city staff, particularly Michael and finance, to understand what are we trying to achieve here? And so we've had amazing amount of input, and this is the culmination of all that coordination and combined effort. And, you know, we feel positive that this is going to set you, the city, the utility up to be able to not only perform these improvements over the next five years, but then get you rolling on your next round of five-year improvements after that.
Got a question?
Yes, sir.
On the water side, I noticed the two pumps that probably need replacing. It says unable to pump drinking water to the city. What makes them unable to pump drinking water?
So that would be what would happen if they broke?
Oh.
That would be the risk factor. Right. Pretty significant there. Yeah, you would, you guys would know pretty quickly if that didn't work. Yes, sir.
Okay, so and on the sewer, the inlet, screening and grit removal?
Yes, sir.
We went over more than that. We're planning on doing more than that with this $6,000, $6 million, correct?
That's correct. That is more of a tag descriptor of those two major items.
Okay.
Yes, sir. There's a lot more in there.
Yeah.
Absolutely. In addition to those three specific named items, I've also put in here what would be our recommendations, which would more be, you know, day-to-day, and that is what Simon and the Public Works are already doing. So when there is an identified leak by either a resident or the staff, you know, find one, they put it on their list of to-do, and then they are knocking those off one at a time. And so what we call those point repairs, but basically minor leaks, minor ongoing issues that can be fixed quickly. We don't want to put those on a list and wait, so those would be ongoing as well. And that includes the painting of the water storage tanks, which is really a schedule determined by the Health Department. And so those just will happen as needed, but we believe that our rates will allow for the cash flow to cover the debt service associated with any lending and any needs with that program. Over time, as funds begin to be generated and repairs are able to be taken care of without lending, we would recommend review of this and adjustment. And so at the five-year mark, you know, there'll be a requirement, but possibly even halfway through or at year three, depending on what revenues look like and how they relate to expenses, we can always do an update. And that's something that Utility Financial Solutions helps us with. So at this point, if you don't have any specific questions, I'm going to bring Dan up, and he's going to go through the rest of this presentation with you.
Hello, thank you, Zane. I'm Dan Casbaum with Utility Financial Solutions, and I'm here to discuss the cost of service results and the financial projection. We're going to look at a five-year long-term projection of your expenses and expected revenues, and we'll see where they're trending. And again, like Zane mentioned, this has been in a lot of work with staff, with Michael and Simon, discussing the projections going forward. So in the packet that you have, if you go one more slide to Slide 5, in making a financial projection, we need to start with assumptions. And this is a list of the assumptions we've used in the financial projection for both water and sewer. So just general inflation of 3.5% each year. It's on your O and M and expenses that incur in the utility. Annual sales will be at 2023 levels, all right? And that's where we started the whole basis of the study. Carroll Boone, you just had, I believe, a 10% increase last year. This year, we're maintaining the $2.42 per 1,000 gallons. We're going to, in 2026, begin increasing that with an assumption of 3% each year. Okay? The rate adjustments, when we talk about adjusting rates, would, are assumed to occur July 1 of '25, and then January 1 of '26, and then the third would be January 1 of 2020, I'm sorry, '27. And it goes out five years, so it'd be the January 1 of each of those oncoming years. The infrastructure improvement revenue would be shared between both funds, 50/50 in my cost of service.
Sorry to interrupt. Are you suggesting a 3% increase through 2029? Is that the way I'm hearing you?
From 2026 through 2029, yes.
3% per year?
Per year, correct. Every year. Great question. And then the big one at the bottom, we have our capital program for the next five years. And as Zane just mentioned, kind of more of the detail there, but what you see on the left, on the bottom, there's our water five-year plan. We have that for vehicles, booster pumps, that add up over the five years of 2.2 million. And we're slowly increasing that each year, so our rates can kind of be implemented in a way that are as minimal as we can to impact our customer bill. Our sewer is, again, a five-year plan, but we have vehicles, the treatment plant, and lift stations, and collection. On the far right, you see the $6 million that we were just approved for. So that will help fund that wastewater treatment plant project. So those are the assumptions that are built into this analysis, the five-year projection. Any questions with the assumptions? Okay, great. The next slide is looking at, we'll look at water first. These are the expenses, as Act 605 recommends that you look at your expenses related to the water supply you're purchasing from Carroll Boone. So that is the blue, the top line. I think they're in black and white. So the top line is our Carroll Boone, and that's going up that 3.5, that 3% each year. The middle line is our operation and maintenance, and the bottom line is our depreciation. So we include depreciation to acknowledge one year of life being consumed from our infrastructure in the utility. Everyone using that infrastructure helps fund that one year of life. And for water, we are debt-free. I'm going to go to the next slide if there are no questions. This is same thing, but looking at revenue. At the very bottom, there's a line that's for non-rate-related revenue, these other revenues that you collect. And in the middle, the flat line, that is the revenue that would be expected, it's about 1.3 million, if rates were to remain where they are today, with no change over those five years. The top line, as you see, goes upward. That is with the recommendation of the rate adjustments that are just on the right there, where you see a 20% increase followed by 8% thereafter. So that's what that top line is following there. So how did I come up with that rate track, the 20 followed by 8? I utilized characteristics that are, that we use to financially identify how healthy a utility is. And on the next slide, we'll look at the two targets for water. The first is what is your cash reserve level? And what we're looking for here is that the utility has a minimum level of cash to make operations day-to-day, be able to pay the bills that are coming through. So on the bottom, you see the line that's trending downward. That is under the no rate change scenario. Our cash is being depleted, and you can see going negative by the first year. That identifies we need to do something with our rate adjustments to address that. The top line there is the recommended minimum reserve, all right? That's about 1.1 million, that top line there. And what we include in there is your utility has day-to-day bills to pay O and M, operation and maintenance. So the timing between when they receive an expense and they pay that bill, and you send out your bill to your customer and receive cash, that working cash needs to be there. And we have a 45-day working capital cash leg there. So that amounts to about $130,000 to have in your cash to support that. We have an emergency fund for catastrophic event. This is not an amount that's intended to fund a complete catastrophic event repair, but we have, because your infrastructure is older, we have a higher risk set to that. So we look at your historical investment, and we're multiplying that by a risk factor. So that's about 550 that we want in cash, so that you can get repairs underway while you're figuring out how and how much you're going to need to finish the repair. And then capital. We look at your five-year capital program, and we add that up, and then we take 20% of that, so one-fifth, to just kind of levelize that. So when your capital projects come to completion, you're able to pay it and move on to the next. That adds up to about $450,000. So that, those are the three components that are in that 1.1 million as a minimum. So that middle line that's slowly trending upward is with that rate track of 28888. You can see we're working towards that minimum level. We're not there yet, but we're working towards it. The, so that's target one. Target two is the optimal operating income. This is where we look at your infrastructure. It becomes more costly every year to repair. So on top of depreciation, we're looking at the inflationary increase on the assets that your system's built with. And that you see is the blue line on the top, pretty flat. It's about $570,000 for that optimal operating income. This is the difference between your revenue collected and the expenses incurred, that difference. And that is then used for your capital spend. Any questions? I guess the bottom line is showing you're operating at a loss without rate adjustments, and it's trending downward. We don't want to operate at a loss. What happens there is you consume your cash.
And just for clarification, this bottom line represented on the graph includes depreciation?
As an expense.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So this is all based on these increases, the 28888? That's all based on, you know, the studies that you've done, and I assume that's basically the bottom line of the whole thing?
Correct. I'm trying to reduce the increases as much as I can to trend you towards the targets that would set you financially healthy.
How do we sell that to the public?
Well, as I mentioned, you know, when you have catastrophic events, you want, people will want their water back on. So for the minimum cash, we've got cash there where you can call people in, that maybe your staff isn't able to do it all right away, and you've got some additional help you can get in. And with the assets being, I believe you're about 70% depreciated on your assets in the water system, very old infrastructure. And it works today, but they're getting older every year. There's going to be a time that to fund unplanned repairs is going to be more costly than figuring out what the next, you know, highest risk is. And I think that's the document that Zane had mentioned or handed out, kind of gives you a list of those assets, so that you can be orderly in identifying high risk.
So where that leaves us then, you know, is just paying for this through the Act 605. We have to do it off revenues. That's what I've been told. We can't try to raise money other ways to help defer any of that, to try and keep the water increases down. I mean, it's, you know, we just did a pretty major increase right at the first of the year, and coming in with another 20% in July is going to rest real hard with people.
The 20% on an average residential bill on a monthly basis would be about 589 increase.
Doesn't sound like a lot, does it?
Yeah, well, it-
But it is.
Every month.
It's, it's, to people on fixed incomes, that's a lot. And it's going to go up. And like I say, we just did it.
The cost of going to buy your water from the shelf can be-
I understand.
Yep.
I understand the need and all that. It's, how do you sell that to the population that, you know, because they're already squealing, put it bluntly, that what we did was highway robbery, so to speak?
I think-
I think right now, let's go through this whole process. You've got to bring, you've got a good point, Terry. I'm not saying you don't, but let's go through this whole deal, and then we'll come back to-
What else is there to go through? Okay, I'll shut up.
Great question.
I was kind of in line with you, Mayor, that I don't know that he can answer how we deliver to our city. I think it's a good question, are there other funds? And are there other ways we can look at how we bring the increases in? You know, I don't know if we, we kind of touched on this weeks ago, months ago, maybe looking at raising rates for businesses or not, or I don't, I don't know the answer.
That's in here.
It's in here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Different-
I didn't skip it.
Different meter ratings or-
Well, the meter ratings are, yeah.
And gallons too, I think, that's all.
That's my next slide.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Your honor. Thank you.
Oh, yours.
All right. So, no, no, no. I like your thinking ahead. There's, the next slide, the rate, the cost of service and rate design, is laying out then by each meter size currently, in that you're charging 1798 for every meter size.
Okay.
It's a flat charge. In the industry, we use AWWA, the American Waterworks Association, to help set rates for water utilities around the nation. And their guidelines identify that you, your larger meters have larger capacity that they can draw on the system, and that drives the cost of all the infrastructure to support that capacity for a 2-inch meter versus a 5/8 inch meter. So it utilizes that capacity as a ratio in assigning that customer cost on a monthly basis. So I'm, I've calculated what that cost of service is. We're not going to get there now. It's something you work towards. What we're doing is we're going to acknowledge that and slowly adjust towards that. And what that will do is help keep our smaller, the 5/8s meter, a little bit lower in the increases compared to the larger.
Yes.
We have some Airbnbs or nightly rentals that have small meters. It's a for-profit thing. So I believe they should have a higher rate than residential?
Now, the-
Is that, is that, is that an acceptable solution, or is it?
It's, it's up to the governing body of that utility to define those rates, you know, what the rates are applicable to.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a very good point. It's a commercial kind of business, but, but in your applicability of a rate, you would need to address that.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sorry.
I hate to back up, but on Page 5, or the fifth slide, we call it, what is, what is the vehicles and the booster pumps? Did you explain that? I meant to bring that up.
Oh, on the capital?
On the Slide 5, on the financial assumptions.
Yes. Yep, those are the capital programs that were provided, so that each year you have vehicles that can be replaced on a regular basis. And so on the sewer, that is what Zane talked about, the booster pumps. So that's, you see how we're building up a reserve, or $2 million to do those two booster pumps over that timeframe. And then with the, I'm sorry, he talked about the sewer plant, but on the water, yeah, there's two booster pumps there.
So the vehicle, you're literally talking about a vehicle?
Yeah, yeah, truck.
So new truck every year?
Work trucks.
$50,000 for a new truck every year?
You might not buy a new truck. We're just building the reserves up for it.
For a new truck every year.
Yep, so that's what's in the plan right now. Yes.
So the 3% increases over 2025, '26 through '29, what you're showing on the rate design, that's your 3% basically broken out by meter size?
So it's a, it's a calculation between the minimum, that monthly charge, and then those commodity charges. So on the commodity, right now you see Block 1, the first two units are currently zero. I'm adding a small charge to that, so we're not providing free service.
Correct.
And then the other blocks, as, because you've got to think too, there are a number of different, number of meters at each of those different sizes, so in calculating a need for a 20% revenue increase, this helps keep the impact to those various customer sizes as minimal as we can.
What are blocks? Block 1, Block 2, Block 3?
Yes, so Block 1 is your first 2,000 gallons.
Okay.
And then Block 2 is above that, up to 6,000 gallons. Yep. Great question.
So I think, question, sorry. From looking at the rate design study that you've given us, the only people that would really be affected for like a 2, 3, or 4 inch would be your hotels, motels, that kind of thing, correct?
I don't think you have a small residential in that size, but likely, yeah, it's the larger meter.
So it'll be our lodging businesses that will cover this?
I don't know the exact- I, I don't know the exact-
Looks like there's one four-inch meter, if this is what I'm kind of getting from this. Is that what that means?
Yep.
One, there's only one four-inch meter in service now. And, and then, but you say that it's per thou, it says use charge for 1,000 gallons. But block one, there's no charge for zero to two units.
So a unit would be, a unit would be the 1,000 gallons.
Okay.
So zero to 2,000 gallons currently is, is a zero charge.
Just, just the base charge.
Okay.
Yep.
So, but there's nothing in here that shows for the gallon each in excess of that?
The block two-
Block two.
You would go up, up or?
Yep.
Oh, units is, doesn't mean units of occupation?
Oh, yes. No, very good. No, it's units of volume.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, now, now I understand what you're saying, yeah.
Thank you. No, I never, I, I gotcha.
Took me a minute too. And we're doing all this, but the whole rate study and all that number crunching that you did just is so that we can be able to maintain the system and, and fix what we haven't fixed in 100 years and, and keep going. That's what it's all about is, because we had, rates had not been raised when they should have been and repairs were patched. And so now we've got to do it all. If we don't, we're just going to keep losing money.
The, the need for a rate increase or a rate adjustment really doesn't ever go away. It just gets bigger.
I understand.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one more.
Yes, sir.
So there is no differentiation between residential uses or commercial uses for the, for the purchase of the gallon?
Nope.
It's all the same.
Yep.
Places do that, but-
Yep. You are correct, yes. All right, so that is the water. Then we'll talk about wastewater. Going to be much the same. We have expenses. Here we have our O and M. And so the bottom is really two lines there. It's O and M is one and depreciation the other. They're pretty much on the same line, right around 430,000 in 2029. And then the top line, that's your O and M for the treatment plant. So you can see those are increasing on an inflationary basis. On the next slide is our revenue. The bottom, again, as I mentioned, is that's the other revenue that the utility gets. It's non-rate related. The middle line, that is going to be less, an adjustment. So that's about 925,000 right now that we get in revenue from rates. So with the adjustments, on the right, you see there are two, the first two changes are at 20%, followed by 10, and then two at 5. I'll just say that, that the 20% in the first change is about a $7 increase. And, and then it's, I write down the numbers for the other two, but right around that $7 increase each year for the 20%. And these two, these adjustments, we're looking at three years, will help us in the following slide here at three key financial targets on this one because we are going to be lended money. And part of that money requires that we meet a debt coverage ratio. That's a ratio between how much cash your utility generates to what your debt service payment is. And the minimum that the act requirement is, is 1.1. So that just means you need to have 10% more revenue than your, your payment. We put a safety factor in there because you may have a low sales frame of time. So we, we make that minimum 1.4 so that you're going to meet that in potential timeframes that your revenues are lower. So that coverage ratio is listed there on the, the bottom left of that slide. The, the middle line is the act at 1.1, and then the top line is our 1.4. And the top line that's going upwards is your coverage ratio with that rate track. All right? So you're, you're, you're moving from about 1.28 up to 1.6. Whereas if we do no change, that's that bottom line that trends downward. Which would be in non-compliance. Yes.
Okay, does our, are we to do away with our INI thing that we get now as well? That additional charge that we have?
Right, that revenue is included.
That revenue is included.
As, in, in the revenue.
So we would actually do away with what our INI, as it currently exists, as we charge it? Are you familiar with it?
Yes, yes, but I have that as an other revenue coming in.
That's the bottom line here.
That shows later here or something?
Uh, no, that was in the prior slide, sewer fund revenues. That bottom line that's at the bottom, it's included in there.
Oh, okay.
So you're saying it doesn't go away, you just absorbed it in?
Yes, it, it helped. You, you, you don't want to get rid of that.
Okay, so that's going to be, that's, we're going to continue with that.
Yes.
Okay, then my, my next question, and maybe I'm premature with this as well, but do you have a sample? Like Joe Blow with that in?
Oh, great design. But let me get through here and, and I can talk to that, yep.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So above the debt coverage ratio is the minimum cash reserve, like I mentioned, in the water. So here, the, the target is right around $1 million, okay, that we want to have in cash. And, and that's made up of about 100,000 in O and M for working cash capital, your emergency fund of about 300,000. Now we have a debt that we are going to have on our utility. So we want to have that debt payment available in cash for when that comes due, we can pay that bill. So that's about 390,000. And then on this one, our capital program is a little bit larger, so it's about 1.3 million that we want to have in cash in, in there. So that sums up to that about $1 million in cash on that utility. And on the right there is optimal operating income. We want to be on that top line, around 750,000 for that. And, and again, that's that inflationary increase. Our assets appreciate every year plus the interest expense on the debt so that we're, we're including those costs in the revenue requirement our rates are designed to. Lot of information. Any questions on, on that slide? And then here is the rate design for sewer, which, similar to water. I have, again, adjusted the rates by meter size so that we're moving each towards cost of service. The larger meters are getting a little bigger increase than the smaller. And I also added that block one to, to begin charging, a charge on those first two units. So like I say, very similar to the water. The only part is there's two years at 20.
Who would be an example of a, a block one? Like a part-time person living here?
Right, so I'm from Michigan. So we have, we call snowbirds that go south for the winter. They lock their house up. We're still maintaining all the infrastructure to provide, when they come home for Christmas, that they can come in and turn the water on. So if you have, I, I don't know that you, you don't have snowbirds.
We do.
You, you do?
We have people go to Mexico.
So is it maybe the seasonal, maybe it's in the winter they're going?
Yeah.
Okay, and then they're here for the summer to, so you, your utility is still servicing all that infrastructure for that, that meter.
Okay.
And, and if we don't charge them appropriately, that cost recovery goes into a commodity that the folks that live here year-round end up funding. So, great question.
So we shouldn't be shoving the water off for them and no bill through the winter and then turn it back on for them in the spring when they come?
Not for free.
Not for free?
And, and, and it really should be that if they turn a service back on within 12 months, policy should be that they pay those months that they were off to, because you are still incurring costs.
Well, that's another thing. A lot of them leave town and they pay public works to come out and turn the water off. And then they pay public works to come back and turn their water on. I'm sure public works will shut people's water off for them so that their house doesn't freeze up, but they, they still will have to pay them a bill through the winter, right?
Yeah, there's, I mean, you are incurring added cost if you're servicing a customer to do that. And to be fair to all your customers, that person or that service should be paying for that request. So I think, so that is the last slide. So the question, Mr. McClung, you, you had asked about overall impact. So with year one, I don't have a slide, I apologize, but I have a number here. An average 5/8s customer using 4,600 gallons. That, now, I would call that 4.6 units.
Okay, yeah, 4.6 units, got it.
So they're going to see about a $12.91 increase in that first change. That's on a per-month basis.
In that first?
That's water and sewer combined, so about $13.
Total?
Total. For that 4,600 gallons on a 5/8s meter. And that's most all your customers. Not all, but the majority. In year two, it's about 11.60, and then in year three, about $10.
So like my bill, most months, unless my kids come to town or something of that nature, I run them in because I'm, I'm a loner. So I think my bill, and I don't pay sewer charge because I'm outside the city limits. Well, I'm not, no, that's not true. I'm inside the city limits, but I, but I'm not on sewer. So if I was outside the city limits, I wouldn't be sitting. And my bill was 48 bucks and change.
You're inside now.
Huh? Yeah, so I'm going to go up, I'm still going to go up probably eight, nine dollars.
Yeah, and, and on average, being that you're low volume, you'll be, you'll be less of the way this is set up. Your increase on a percent basis will be less than someone that uses a 5/8.
Yeah, well, but, but, but that's, I mean, that takes into account the total bill, which is also trash and-
Oh.
That's, that's, and I can't remember how much that is off top.
That's what a lot of people look at.
I didn't, I didn't-
They look at the bottom.
I didn't break that out.
They look at the bottom line.
They're going to look at the bottom line just like I do.
Yep.
What the total bill is.
So, oh, sorry.
I'm going to be looking around 60 bucks in that neighborhood.
I haven't looked at it that way.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the way we've got to sell it here. Like, that's what people are going to look at, you know? They're going to look at, what do I pay? How much am I going to pay? That's, they, they don't care how much we set back in reserve. They don't care. We care. Because that's our job. But they don't. I mean, they're looking at their pocketbook only. So that's, that's what we need help with, is, you know? I understand the need. I'm, I'm 100% behind that, 150% behind it, 200%.
So, um, just to clarify, just to clarify on the example that you gave. You're saying, so the first increase would be like $12.91 for a 5/8s user?
Yep.
And then the second increase would be another $11.60. So between now and your, and the second rate increase, which would be two years from now, they're looking at $24 total increase?
So in the-
And each additional year, you're going to have that amount of increase, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
I just want to make sure.
And I, I want to make sure you understand too. The, in the assumptions that we talked about, it would be, the way this is set up is July 1st of '25 would be our first adjustment.
Right, so it's not actually, it's sooner than that.
And then it's January of '26 first. So it's not-
Makes the story more difficult.
I was saying, right, I was saying year and I, I got away from-
You're right, yeah.
Adjustment.
Right, okay, thank you for the-
But what that does, looking further out, you're going to be more in a position where they are just inflationary adjustments each year. It's something you want to keep on. It's much easier to do a 3% than it is to be in the situation we are right now. But I really see after three years, you're going to be more in that inflationary adjustment, you know, each year.
When we get to that point, we should pass an ordinance that automatically kicks it in, every year?
I'm not a fan of that, but-
No, why not?
Because we want to look at our costs and look at our revenues.
Sure, it can-
Every year examine and make sure, okay.
Things change.
Absolutely. And if we all die off pretty soon and it will, you know, the new people, they won't care because it, it'll be just normal for them.
True.
Time does that.
Thank you. I think it was a really good, it was informative.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. There are any other questions? Wonderful.
I noticed, I noticed one thing. Well, we have an expert here that helped us do this rate study, so now it's the time to ask questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
I noticed that our steep hillsides are not, are not-
You are, you are a unique city.
And, you know, we've got 300 PSI down here.
I heard where I'm staying at the Grand Central, that the pressure's super high there and then-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But I will say that adds, so if you're trying to compare yourself around it, you, you know, are operating a system for Eureka Springs. You're unique and so be aware of that.
Yeah, that's, I'm starting looking through the increases and projections and all that. And I'm wondering, and I don't know the answer to this, which is why I'm asking, is there a certain pass-through tax that we can put up to the citizens to vote on instead of increasing their water bills every, you know, six months? Do you know if that's been done and is that even legal in the state? Is why I'm asking.
I'm gonna, I don't think it is with the Act 605. I think Act 605 requires the water and sewer to be self-sufficient.
Has to cover it.
And not based on, on sales tax. Now, I, we tried five, six years ago to pass a sales tax dedicated for improvements on water and sewer and it failed. But this is a requirement and I don't, now, Zane may know more about it than I do, but I don't think that's, that's an option.
And I think the sales tax is something that is voted on and there's risk there that- that it doesn't get approved the next time. So that's, as Mayor, you mentioned, it needs revenue from rates.
So just to be clear on what you're saying, are you aware, you're not aware of any sort of legal reason why we couldn't put forth a use tax to secure a bond issue to help pay? And maybe even in addition to some sort of rate adjustment?
I, I haven't, I haven't gone into-
Okay.
-look at that. Sorry.
Well, it's an enterprise fund. I think it has to be financed by rates, by income of the water, water sources. Zane, you got, you're shaking your head.
Yeah. Well, I was just going to add to this because you guys are hitting exactly on the challenge and what Dan and UFS have done an amazing job for us, is that there's a time factor involved here. And so to do a bond issue or a vote on a tax, you would basically have to make sure that those revenues were in place before we started draw on our loan to make sure that that debt service coverage ratio is maintained. So to get the schedule of all of this compliance going, it is much more in your hands now versus if you go to the voters.
Well, I was under the impression that, that we couldn't do anything with, that the water and sewer bills didn't pay for. It's an enterprise fund.
There's probably more information here that I'm not aware of as well.
So just a reminder to the council that this has to be in compliance with AWWA requirements. And because of that, they have to be based off the bills. We can't use arbitrary fund from parking or whatever to fund this-
We know that.
Fund. So it has to be based off the bills that we built for that water use.
My experience with particular bond issues is when there is a specific project. And so, for instance, our sewer project where we're asking for a large loan from the federal agency, that would be an example of a way to do that. And what that would do, if done in the correct order, is it would prevent that project from requiring a separate rate study and rate increase.
So if we had talked about this a year ago, then timing wouldn't be such an issue. Possibly we could have had time to pass a use tax, let's say sewer and water and sewer tax, right? That would be dedicated to secure a bond issue?
As far as I'm aware, you guys are allowed to do whatever you want. That was not what we were hired to.
Right. Right.
Mr. McClung?
Yeah. I, what you're talking about there is we, I think, and what they just clarified, is that we can do that, but in order to do the projects, we got to have the money lined up before they, before they're going to take on the project. Because if you ain't got it, they ain't going to put in the time. That's what I'm, you know, that's the deal.
And wherever we get the money from, it has to be paid for out of water.
Well, it, the, the thing about it is, to get the tax, you, you have the variable, the huge variable of getting the city to approve it. Like, that's what Butch was talking about, is that we tried that several years ago, worked on it real hard, and it failed. There was some, didn't take a whole lot of screaming to, to defeat it, unfortunately.
I would say there was some confusion there about how that money was going to be spent. I mean, at least I was not clear. But, I mean, it's either that or a rate increase, right? So if the community knows that those are, are their options, then they get to choose. That's my thinking, anyway.
You could do this. You could, you can do the rate study and, and make the adjustments, and then put it out there for a sales tax while this is going on, and then you could rescind, or not rescind, but you could revert, do a reversion or something like that if you got that tax passed. But if you didn't, you, but you have to have something in place that's solid for, for them to, you know, to do it.
Also-
Or we're not going to get anything done.
And I, and I know, Mr. McClung remembers, I don't think anybody else was here, when we had our last bond issue for water, sewer, and sewer line improvements, I don't know how many millions of dollars it was, I mean, whatever the bonds were paying off just now, that was for some sewer lines, built the sewer plant that we had 25 years ago. We ran out of money. And our problem is, over the last 25 years, we've never had any money to do improvements.
Right.
And that's what this is about, is constant maintenance. And it's like a house or anything else. We got to maintain it every year. And that's what we didn't do, a very minimal maintenance on what we've got.
So the bond would limit us. We would say we want a bond for X amount, but then if it costs more and we don't go through with the rate increases, we never have that reserve built up to be able to cover anything. We're back where we are.
Yeah. That's, that's the thing. You know, I've been on the council for a number of years. Butch has been involved in city government too, and, for a number of years. And we've always did what we needed to do to get by and fix, but we never, once the city, for the last 125 years, nobody's done anything to plan for the future. And that's what we're trying to do now.
And including the money that Carol Boone charges us every year, they give it away. And we say, we're not going to pass this on to, to the public. We're going to, we're going to eat this.
Yeah.
The city's going to eat it. And we did that for several years. And what that did was it got us into trouble where the city had to loan the sewer money.
Yeah. For a little history on that, we used to, our bonds that we pay, that we're supposed to have 20% in it, I believe it is, reserved to cover that until the last couple of years, until we, at least started the INI, we never had it. You know, we always made our payment. They never called it due, but, but they could lean on us real hard because we, our books never showed that, that buffer. We never missed a payment, thank goodness.
Fortunately, we paid those two bonds off early, and that got our rating up, and that's how we refinanced that bond.
We have, when we did the INI, it was with the intention of, of doing some of this stuff. We had no idea at then, and that was hard to get past, but it was, it was, we had no idea, I mean, it's just going to be so much. So it's overwhelming, but we got to tackle it. We got to do it.
So Terry and Butch may be able to answer this. Again, I don't know if I was clear in what I was trying to say, and like Rochelle said, if we were to start this process with your suggested rate increases, and let's say, two or three years down the road, we have decided to put up for a, I'm just going to say, throw a number out there, a 1% sales tax. And a 1% sales tax paid by over 1 million people per year is a lot different than our population of just over 2,000. So it seems smart to me to do something like that instead of consistently raising prices for the next five years. Does that make sense? Am I making sense?
I think it's illegal.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
I, I don't think it is, but-
Well, like Simon just mentioned, that it's illegal.
No, no, you can't use, you can't use parking money.
You'd have to designate the tax.
It can be, it can be written, definitely.
Yeah. I'm talking about a specific tax for-
Not true.
For water and sewer.
It's a sales tax, but it could be, you know.
It's a separate business.
Okay. Wait, one, one at a time here.
Well, if, let's just say if we can do this, we have to have this in place now, David.
Yes. I agree. That's why I said that first.
And then, but yes, we could try and, and, and get down the road, you know, next election, and, and get a 1 cent sales tax if we can get it on the ballot and get it sold.
That's exactly where, what I said and where I'm going.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, that's, I agree. That, I think that's the thing to try and do.
Yeah. I mean, that's exactly what we tried to do before, based on a million people, but for some reason, the citizens voted against it.
I'm just wondering if we word it in a very specific way, that this money, this tax is for sewer and wastewater and water development.
It doesn't have to try again.
It would be a permanent sales tax.
Yeah. And here's the trick to it, is that, say, look, we've got to do this now, but this sales tax will make this go away. Not, not where we've gotten to at that point.
Yeah.
You know, two years down the road, we're still going to have, you know, 30 to 40% increase based roughly of what we have now, but you won't have any after that.
Yeah. I, I was probably premature, sorry, Steve, premature in bringing it up, but you're, we're on the same page, so I think it's good.
I like this idea because it gives the voters the opportunity to decide, do I want to go ahead and pass this 1% tax, or do I want to go ahead and pay out this gradual increase? I like that.
And it may be that they'll think about it a little bit differently after seeing their water bill.
Yeah.
Knowing that more increases are coming. And to your point, I, you know, I'm thinking about our population of 2,000 people, we're not exponentially growing here yet, but I'm looking at this, and there's like just two things highlighted here. Makes me really nervous. I know our infrastructure is aging very quickly, so to think that we're going to finance this kind of change and improvement on 2,000 people just seems like crazy to me, but-
Sounds like a mountain to climb.
I'm new here, so.
Mr. McClung?
I also believe that we can get a clarification on that from the state pretty quickly if we needed it.
On the tax?
On, on, on the sales tax, you know, foot in the bill. And Harry might be right. I don't agree with him. I don't think he is, but he could be.
Well, that's what I get from Simon. That's what, that's what I always thought it was. That's why they call it an enterprise fund, is because it's a- Zane, you got any other? It's got to stand by itself.
I just appreciate everybody's input. I think you guys are making, you know, really tough decisions on behalf of your community, and there's, there's no easy choices. I think the idea of finding alternate ways of generating revenue that can supplement any additional future increases that we know are just going to keep coming is a great idea. So we, we would love to help support you in any way we can.
Thank you so much for all of the work that went into this.
Yeah. Yeah, really. It's great.
Nicely presented, but I know a lot of work went into it.
It gets us, it gets us moving forward.
Now, I think one of the things, Zane, and I don't think I heard you say this, and I know it's in your report, this rate study is also for improvements for new water and sewer lines. So it's not just-
Right.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's not just the sewer-
That was the other thing that I actually did want to bring up. When we go all the way back to the assumptions page, I know the question came up earlier about some of the items listed under the capital improvements. The main takeaway there is that the, like vehicles booster pumps, you know, and vehicles and the wastewater plant, those are all placeholders. The most specific budget that we have put an engineer estimate to is the wastewater treatment plant improvements. But these are trying to create revenues that will be used for what is needed at the time.
Exactly.
Get it.
Thank you very much.
Open that up again.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
We do appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from council? If there's nothing else, we can adjourn until 6 o'clock. I'll move.